Southeast Johnson County Consolidated Zoning Board, August 3 meeting. So if we can start with our roll call, please.
On Zoom, Dan Foyle is absent. John Lloyd.
Present.
Kelly.
Present.
Ken Klingensmith.
Present.
Fred Wingard is absent. Dennis Boland.
Present.
And Emily Coleman.
All right. Thanks, Sherri. If you'll read the hybrid meeting statement.
This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. The meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, please call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, use your microphone, pardon me, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10 seconds remaining warning sound. For board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chairman, Megan Lynch, Planning Department. Dan Foyle is now on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I was a little late.
That's all right. We'll forgive it this time, Dan. Okay, agenda items, any additions, deletions, or revisions to the agenda? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm like Coleman. I motion to approve the agenda.
Ken Klingensmith, a second.
Motion and second. All in favor of approving the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so got a good agenda. Disclosure of conflicts of interest? Disclosure of external contacts or discussions? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the minutes of the July 6 meeting. Yeah, any comments, changes, or a motion?
Kelly asked to make a motion that we accept the minutes from the July 6.
Finished Boland, a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the July 6 meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, minutes are approved. Board reports. Pardon me, folks. Board of County Commissioners' actions.
Good evening. Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. There are no updates for Board of County Commissioners' actions since our last meeting. There were two applications on the July 6 Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board meeting, and those will be, those are scheduled for action at the regular meeting for the Board of County Commissioners on August 11. I could also provide an update for Planning Commission.
Yes, please.
Okay, for Planning Commission, the last meeting, the last week, that was scheduled for July 26th, was canceled due to a lack of quorum. The next regularly scheduled meeting for the Planning Commission is on August 23rd. That concludes the board reports. Happy answering the questions.
Questions? Thank you, Sean. Stillwell Community Plan.
We're going to defer update until next month.
All right. Thanks, Ken. Okay, move on to business before the board. Excuse me. Application number SE22214REZ, rezoning 18893 Noll Avenue. An application number SE22215EP and FP preliminary and final plat. Okay, so this was from, I believe, the June meeting. It was, the board declined to make a recommendation up to the Planning Commission, so it was, this has been remanded back to the board now with changes. So we are ready for this. Wait, is the applicant here? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, applicant's here. Okay, staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board, Michelle Cricks, Johnson County Planning. And this is project number SE22215PPFPAU Estates of Shadow Woods. This is a preliminary and final plat for four 10 nominal acre residential lots on 40 acres. The property is zoned rural district, or RUR. So just a little bit of history here, this application will look familiar to you. This application was originally heard at the June 1st, 2022 meeting, Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board meeting. Just really quick, too, I would like to note for the record that in the staff memo y'all received, the date of the meeting was incorrect. I mistyped and accidentally typed June 2nd. Just note that it should be June 1st. During that June 1st meeting, both the zoning board and neighbors raised concern regarding the request. Some of those concerns included, the proposed development with five parcels was not consistent with the existing character of the neighborhood. The proposed subdivision was not appropriate for an area that does not have other subdivisions, and was not consistent with parcels around the subject property. And the proposed road connection to the north was an assumption on future development on the part of the county. Took a couple votes, but due to these concerns, by a vote of four to three, the zoning board voted to recommend denial of the project to the Board of County Commissioners, and this project was scheduled for the June 30th Bocc meeting. At the June 30th meeting, the applicant requested, and staff did support, the project to be remanded back to the zoning board for an opportunity to make some adjustments to the project. The Bocc unanimously voted to remand the project, which required the zoning board to reconsider this item within 90 days of that Bocc meeting. Since the June 30th meeting, the applicant has indicated to staff that they have made attempts to meet with neighbors to discuss the project. Attempts include both in-person and through letters. At this evening, I also placed a copy of the, of the letter that we received, just kind of an email copy that was sent. And since Mr. Foyle is on Zoom, I will read it to him for, so he has the same information. It says basically, "For dear property owner, I am developing property to the south of yours and hope we might discuss any concerns you may have regarding our project. I believe, since we are neighbors, that we should be considerate of each other and have, and can come to a mutual agreement that would suit us both if there are any issues. I would like the opportunity for us to talk and understand each of our positions and hope you will reach out to me at your convenience. Most sincerely, Michael Bagelfer." This note will be entered into the public record that the neighbors who came to the Bocc meeting, there were three, receive this letter. So the previous request included the rezoning of the 40-acre parcel from the rural district to the planned rural district and create a five-lot subdivision. Just to note, the applicant has withdrawn that rezoning request, so the property is proposed to remain as rural district, and has reduced the number of lots from five down to four. Just to kind of, just to kind of bring us all back here. The subject property is located north of 191st Street along the east side of Noll Avenue. The subject property is generally characterized as unimproved and used for agricultural purposes. The topography slopes from the north and south to the middle of the property, where run, water runoff is collected and conveyed to the east into the Champ Branch Creek, located along the eastern boundary of the property. The east end of the property is located also within a 100-year floodplain associated with the creek, and vegetation on the east side is kind of considered to be dense mature trees. To the north and south of the subject property are large residential lots, which are generally greater than 30 acres in size. East of the subject property are the Union Pacific Railroad tracks and smaller residential lots in the Mission Trail subdivision. To the west, across Noll Avenue, is land owned by KCPNL. Surrounding properties are zoned rural district and residential neighborhood one district. Land west of the subject property is owned by KCP, the land west of the subject property owned by KCPNL is zoned a mix of RUR and the Planned Research Development and Light Industrial Park District, or the PEC 3, which is that purple area identified on the slide. And just for reference, that is a location of a very large KCPNL substation that supplies power to the region or to the vicinity here. Here's a clip of the, out of the rural comprehensive plan with the subject property identified with the star, and it is located within the urban fringe plan area, meaning there is a separate plan for that particular area. And it is located within the Blue Valley area plan. The subject property is located in the kind of red rectangle there, kind of split between the rural policy area, which is a one-dwelling unit per 10-acre requirement, and then the park open space kind of associated with that floodplain that would be undevelopable. So here is the previous plan submitted that was reviewed by this board on the June 1st meeting. As you can see, there were five lots proposed with lot sizes ranging from four acres to 10 acres. There was the lot coming, or the road coming in off of Noll Avenue, 188th Street. And then there was a proposed future connecting road titled Rosewood that would, at some point in the future, should the lot north be developed, that was intended to be connected, so there was, kind of create more of a neighborhood feel. However, based on comments received at that meeting, the zoning board, the applicant is proposing some changes to the plan. As I've already mentioned, the request to rezone the subject property to the planned rural district has been withdrawn, and the applicant is keeping the rural zoning district. We're reducing the number of lots to four 10 nominal acre-sized lots. The internal street is, the one internal street is now proposed, which is planned to terminate in a cul-de-sac within the development. The original plan, as you remember, depicted that future right-of-way connection, which was labeled Rosewood Street for future connectivity. That street has been removed. Access to all four lots will be from 188th Street only. The original plan did show that Lot 1 would have had a direct access from the Rosewood Street connection. Planning staff review or analyzed required infrastructure requirements for the proposed plan with respect to the rural zoning district designation, and the plat does meet all the infrastructure requirements for the lot size in this district. Additionally, the proposed plan does comply with the Blue Valley area plan of the rural comprehensive plan. Due to the reconfiguration of the plan, the applicant is asking for one plat exception to the lot width for Lot 2. The plan is proposing a lot width of approximately 200 feet at the 50-foot build line, rather than the required 300 feet required by regulations. This request is a 33% reduction from the standard, and this is due to that adjusted common lot line between lots one, or two and three, right through here. So both lots can comply with the minimum nominal, nominal lot area of 10 acres required in the RUR zoning district. So rather than the lot line being a straight shot east, it's adjusted to the northeast to ensure that Lot 3 would have sufficient acreage. And although the width of Lot 2 is 100 feet less than the standard, access to the lot would not be hindered and would not impact the other three lots in the development. Staff does support the plat exception. Since it is staff's opinion, the plat exception would not be contrary to the public interest or would not unnecessarily burden the county or does not annul the intent and purpose of the regulations. Staff is recommending approval of a preliminary plat, a plat exception to the lot width for Lot 2, and a final plat for four residential lots located northwest of 191st Street and Noll Avenue, to be known as Estates of Shadow Woods, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff memo, and a recommended motion if you would like to refer to that. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thanks, Michelle. Questions of the staff?
Hey, John, this is Dan Foyle. Sorry, I got a quick question. The, that dry, or the road that goes in there, is there any kind of a plan around runoff? You know, like, I guess the geographical, because it looks like there's a ravine, right, where they're putting that road?
The, this is Michelle with Johnson County Planning. The road is proposed to be just a little off of that ravine. A stormwater study was supplied to our professional engineering staff here with the county, and they have reviewed and accepted the stormwater.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Michelle. Any more questions? For staff? Okay, applicant, you'd like to take some time and come up to the podium, introduce yourself, make any statements?
My name is Rick Trumbull. I live in Stillwell, Kansas. I'm actually partners with Mike Bagelfer, and this was a project that we just figured we would try to develop, keeping it within the standards of kind of what's out in the area.
Rick, let me talk to you for one second. Can you, you gave us your name. Could you give us your address, please?
18340 Mohawk Lane.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that. Go ahead.
So anyways, we just trying to keep it within the area of what's allowed, being four 10-acre lots. And kind of keeping it with what's out in the area right now currently is where some of the houses go and the acreage that goes with it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Rick, this is Ken Klingensmith. I just want to commend you. I had a chance to review the minutes from the June 1st meeting, and I think the revisions that you made, the proposal, keeping in the zoning consistent, I think you've really addressed a lot of the concerns, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, John Lloyd, I'd echo that, and I know that you, you lost a lot, but you lost some streets, so hopefully you kind of, that kind of came out in the wash.
Yeah, we're comfortable with it.
Good. Thank you. Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments. Yes, sir. Step up to the podium, name and address, please.
My name is James Schalfont. I live at 18755 Noll, adjacent to this property to the north. I, and the applicant, I have spoken to the applicant, and I applaud him for trying to, improving the plan, going from five to four. I would only, obviously, I prefer that he split it into two 20s. I think it'd be better for everyone, but that's, that's my say.
Okay. All right. Thanks, James. Anyone else in the hearing room would like to make a comment? Okay, we have one person on Zoom that wants to give a public comment. We don't have a name. Their phone number is showing up as 913-927-6661. You still see him there?
Yes, they're being asked to unmute.
Okay, they say I'm unmuted.
You are unmuted. Name and address, please.
Tim Hickock, address is 18601 Noll Avenue, two properties that were from the subject. And I'm sorry about all this. This is the first phone Zoom I've ever done. I'm in the middle of Idaho, actually. It's 100 degrees. Doesn't sound good to me. I am a residential developer. I've done a lot of subdivisions around town. My company's most visible achievement is Ward Parkway. We're pretty old. I've done a development in the county, but I do know, know my way around the land plan, and this is a good one. Mostly because Lot 3 is not developable. Most of the lot is either stream corridor, cliff, or floodplain. And if you, I can't see what you've got there, but there's a, there's a plat that's got the topo on it. You can see that Lot 3 is, it's this very limited place where you could actually put a house. It's basically, most of it is a cliff, very wooded, and then it goes down to the floodplain. So this topography dictates that the house has to be placed on .62 acres on the northwest corner of Lot 3. You can plainly see that that's the only place for the house. 6, .62 acres enough for a house, but it is not enough for a house and a lateral field, which my engineer estimates would require at least 10 and maybe 15,000 square feet. It's my understanding that 15,000 square feet can't be accomplished by tearing up the forest to the east, and it's got, all got to happen on the .62 acres, and in my opinion, that's not possible. Staff probably can see this, but they're probably taking the position that wastewater is going to prevent a house there at a later date. I suggest we save this developer some grief and send him back to the drawing board. It's my request that the application be denied and the developer be given instructions to either prove with wastewater's blessing that a house can be constructed on Lot 3 or preferably split Lot 3's acreage up between Lots 2 and 4. This will save the developer money on street costs because the cul-de-sac can, can be moved west. I, I think that the neighbors could be persuaded to get behind a three-lot subdivision. We, we don't like it as it is. We objected on the not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood before. As I understand it, this might be a moot point since he's not trying to upzone. So, it, to me, the, the thing looks like a natural for a lot split right up the ravine where the, where the road is supposed to go. Jim, Jim said the same thing. I'm echoing the same thing. I told the same thing to the developer. Let's keep Stillwell, Stillwell. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Mr. Hickock, thank you very much for the comment. Any other comments in the room? Any other comments? Any other people on Zoom? Nope. Okay, any further questions of the zoning board staff, for the staff, for the applicant?
It's Dan.
Go ahead, Dan.
Sorry, I would, I would ask the staff, do they look at the, I know they look at the topology. Do they look at the need for, you know, the septic and the lateral fields and all that kind of stuff? Like Mr. Hickock was mentioning.
Sean?
Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. The details for septic are usually not provided until the time of building permit. That's something that certainly the applicant, I would assume, has investigated that. It'd be something that we would want the applicant to respond to specifically. We've not seen any details for building permit plans at this time for any of these lots. We don't, as a typical matter, of course, for our plat reviews, not required to look at where a septic tank or septic would be provided on a lot. That would be a detail of time of building permit. If an applicant decided at some point that they couldn't do this on the existing plotted lot, they would have to make an amendment or a replat to a plat. But that's not something that would normally be required as part of a plat review. That certainly would be a good question for the applicant to see if they have considered that and discussed that with the Health and Environment Department.
Dan, did you catch all that?
I did. Thank you very much, Sean. Hey, I got a question. You cannot put septic laterals in a floodplain, correct?
I think that's correct.
That is correct.
That's correct. Any other questions?
Question and point of clarification. The motion that's in front of us is to approve a preliminary plat. Is this for preliminary and final plat? Or is it just the preliminary? Because I'm looking at the applicant, the first page of the staff documents.
The recommended motion is for the preliminary plat, the plat exception, and the final plat for four residential lots.
I'm sorry, keep reading, got it? I read right.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, we're going to close the public comments and go on to the discussion of the application by the zoning board. Anybody have any comments?
Could we hear from the applicant on response to the two concerned residents?
Rick, you want to, so a couple people wanted to talk about, oh, they, still your lot size and character of the neighborhood and the valuation of the lot for a septic system and room for dwelling in a septic system.
Sure. Rick Trumbull, Stillwell, Kansas. Initially, when we did this, and we had it with five lots, that was one of the concerns that we had on that lot. And so we actually had the engineer kind of sketch out a standard-sized house and stick it on there to make sure that there was enough room for setbacks and everything on the front. So it, it's limited a little bit to the front of a lot, but because of the bluff and the floodplain down below, that's really all we can do. And now that we've revised this for the four, it actually has made the lot a little bit larger, which makes it even easier to put in the lateral field and have the house there.
Kelly asked, so just for clarification, you have worked through this, and they said that it is doable with laterals and all that, is what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah, originally, when we started, we had the engineer lay it out and put a house on there.
Okay, thank you.
And that was when it actually went smaller, too, because it was five instead of the four. So now it's actually gotten larger, a lot has.
Then, do you want to make any response to people talking about character of the neighborhood and lot size?
Well, I mean, the, you know, the 10 acres, with the exception of that lot, obviously, they could put the home where they like. The front two are kind of more of just a prairie, so there's not going to be a lot of shelter or hiding it. But based off what the lot cost is, it's going to have to be a fairly expensive house just because of what they're going to have into the land. So, you know, it's, it's definitely going to be along the lines of the standards of kind of what you see the new construction going on in Stillwell.
Okay. Good for you, Ken.
Yes.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
This is Ken. I think when we look back at the concerns we had, a lot of my concerns were related to the rezoning, to the PRUR, or the PRUR, with that off the table and staying within the rural district. And then when looking at Article 9 in the rural district zoning regulations, what's being proposed is within those guidelines and framework. So I'm, you know, I appreciate the, the concerns of the neighbors, but within the zoning regulations, what's being proposed does meet the guidelines and criteria for that.
Yes, Kelly asked. I'm going to agree with Ken. And one of my problems with the original plot, too, was just the orientation of some of the houses. And this definitely gives better orientation of the houses with the way this is drawn. And I guess you'll just, you know, the lot will, the last lot will either sell or not sell if it works with somebody who wants to buy the lot and develop a house or a plan. So I think that'll work itself out at some point.
Yeah. Thanks, Kelly and Ken. I, I agree. I agree strongly. I know he's met the requirements for the zoning, isn't any longer asking for the zoning change. And Lot 3 is a challenging lot. I mean, I, I can see several ways that we can, that somebody can get a good-sized house and septic on there. I mean, they may have to be a little bit creative, may cost them a little more money. But again, like you said, Kelly, that'd be reflected in the price and the saleability of the lot. So I'm definitely supporting here. Pendley?
Emily Coleman, I'm in support of this project. People frequently buy multiple lots anyways when they purchase and build houses, so.
I have to agree with what everybody said, due to the change in the, the lot sizes and everything. I have to agree with what. the lot sizes and everything. I have to agree with what, what everybody else has said, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Dennis. Dan, uh, out there remotely, you have any comment?
No, I appreciate the developer's effort to, uh, you know, uh, change the plating and everything and, uh, changing the zoning. So I appreciate that and I'm in agreement with everyone there.
Perfect. Thanks, Dan. Might wanna make a motion?
Kelly Rast, I make a motion. I move to approve a preliminary plat, including a plat exception to the lot width of Lot Two and final plat for four residential lots located northeast of one ninety-first Street and Knoll Avenue to be known as the Estates of Shadow Woods, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff memo.
Emily Coleman, I second.
Right, uh, motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so this is approved, so it'll be recommended up to the zoning board. When, Michelle?
Michelle Crick, Johnson County Planning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners on September eighth, two thousand twenty-two, here at the Administration Building, one eleven South Cherry Street, third floor, Board Hearing Room, Olathe, Kansas. That meeting will start at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Next item on business for the board. Item B, application number SE two two, two two nine, FP, uh, PPFP, preliminary and final plat, southwest corner, two hundred and seventh Street and Lackman. Phelps Engineering Incorporated, applicant, NDMC Realty LLC land owner. Hey, uh, we have a applicant here. Judd, say your name. Go ahead and say who you are. All right, thanks. Okay, uh, staff report.
Good evening, Michelle Lineiger, Planning Staff. Uh, these applications are for preliminary and final plat for an eight lot residential subdivision called WoodSpring Estates. Um, not. Um, this aerial shows the location of the parcel outlined in blue. Um, it's located south and west of the intersection of two hundred and seventh Street and Lackman Road. Here's a close up aerial of the property. Um, it's all zone rural and the majority of the surrounding properties used for agricultural uses with the exception of the residential directly to the north and to the west. Um, this is a prelim, preliminary plat of the parcel, includes eight lots, just over ten acres each. Uh, the lots outlined in orange are lots one, three, and four, and they take access, uh, are proposed to take access off of two hundred and seventh Street. Lot Two, which is outlined in purple, will take access off of Lackman Road. And lots five through eight, outlined in red, will share access onto, um, Lackman Road. So lots five and six will share access, and seven and eight will share access. And there's also a small amount of flood plain and stream buffer zone outlined in green in the northeast corner or northwest corner of the subject property. And also the plat is dedicating sixty feet of right away on each street. Here's the final plat. This kind of gives you, um, labels of how the lots are laid out since it's, um, pretty small numbers on there. All of the subdivision regulations and minimum infrastructure requirements are met with this plan, so there are no waivers or, um, change exceptions for this. And staff does recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat for an eight lot residential subdivision to be known as WoodSpring Estates, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report. And then here's a motion, um, if you see.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any questions of the staff?
Can you elaborate on, um, the number of access points to the road type, uh, the carnet road type in?
Um, two oh seventh Street, um, they're required to have, um, three hundred and thirty feet per driveway entrance. And the one caveat to that is for Lot One, they have to be six hundred feet away from the intersection. So, um, if you'll notice on the plat, um, there's some hashing along, um, the majority of that lot, except for the very west corner along two hundred and seventh Street. That is access restriction, so they can only put their driveway there. Um, and if you look, it's also on Lackman Road. Um, and then there's some driveway restrictions along, um, Lackman. That's a type three, uh, carnet, so they have to have six hundred and sixty feet of frontage per driveway. Um, that is met as long as those, um, shared driveways are provided for with lots five through eight. So there's, there's easements, excess easements that straddle the lot lanes between five and six and seven and eight. So the individual lots five through eight don't meet that six hundred and sixty to have their own driveway. So together, they meet that, that regulation and they have provided for, um, an easement for that shared driveway there.
Thank you.
I stand for, is there, what are the limits on, uh, setbacks for outbuildings and size of outbuildings for lots and such?
I did not understand.
Building setback lines for outbuildings?
On size, size of outbuildings.
The building setbacks or front setbacks are shown on, um, along the roads on the plat. And then, um, they're shown, well, those are easements around there. Um, they would be the standard setbacks for the RUR district. Um, hundred and ten from the center line of the road on the front, and then fifty, fifty or twenty-five, twenty-five on the side and rear.
You can't, so basically, basically twenty-five feet on the sides and rear and how much on the front?
It's a, it's a hundred and ten from the center line of the road.
Hundred and ten from the center line of the road.
And that would apply for, um, primary structure and residential structures that are over there.
Perfect, thanks, Michelle. Did you catch that, Dan?
I did, thank you.
Pardon me, any other questions of the staff? All right. Thanks, Michelle. Right, applicant?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, my name's Judd Clausen with Phelps Engineering, address twelve seventy North Winchester, Olathe, Kansas. Civil engineer and surveyors for the project, appearing on behalf of our client, DMC Realty LLC. I'll keep my remarks fairly short and brief. Um, this is simply a preliminary and final plat, the subdivide to eighty acres into ten acre parcels. Uh, as the staff report, uh, indicates, all requirements of the subdivision code have either been met or they're not applicable. It's been reviewed by your Public Works Department as well, memo's in there. Uh, so we'll stand for any questions and we accept any, the stipulations.
This is Ken Klingon Smith. Um, I noticed that this is gonna be a two-phase project with one through four and then five through eight. Is, are those near, what's the timeframe from beginning of the project to the end of phase two? Or is it really a phase one with phase two to occur at a future point?
It's, it's really, uh, the timeline is more market driven than anything. So it would really be phase one upfront, and then as the market allows, we would be able to move into phase two.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, John Lloyd. Um, so the, the lots with the shared access, that, um, just a logistics and constructability thing. So they have the shared easement, that easement's gonna get recorded. But as far as the, as far as the practicality and the logistics, the, the, th- does the county still put in the culvert? And, no, I mean, they do that for a single residence, I believe, still. So my, my point is, how to, how to, how do the, if the, assuming the county puts in the culvert, then that's done and, and each separate lot owner just has to get their own self over to the easement and is the cost of, like, some sort of gravel pad or, or construction entrance thing done there by the developer, or is it just dirt and get care how you can?
Right, so the developer will coordinate the, the driveway, uh, for the two, two lots that share that driveway easement. And, um, in the staff report, it talks about a driveway permit is needed for each driveway, so that'll have to be applied for. Uh, uh, and then driveway constructed, who probably is gonna go in first with the first lot sale and set that up such that the second lot then has access to that same driveway. And that first driveway, the driveway is already constructed at that point with a recorded easement on it by a plat or separate instrument. So, um, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but it's going in first.
It's, I, I, I think it's, it's good that you've had that easement plotted out. I just, just wanted to understand how, you know, somebody coming out there to build, what kind of the process they had to go through since, so the driveway permit, so if you're on one of those shared lots, does the driveway permit have to get you all the way out to two hundred and, uh, all the way out to Lackman? Or does it just get you to the easement because then the easement's already taken care of by the develop? That's, the, the servicing and the easement and the culvert's already taken care of by the developer?
So the driveway permit should take care of that part of the work that's necessary with inside the right of way. Um, and then after it gets past the right of way, then that's between the two property owners and the developer to get to whatever house or houses that, um, would be served.
Not a huge deal either way. I was just curious how that worked more than anything. Okay. Thanks, Judd. Any other questions?
It's, uh, Watch Three and Four, shouldn't there be a shared driveway there too because of the creek?
This is Michelle Lineiger. Um, I'm gonna jump in here. Um, two oh seven Street has a smaller, um, lot frontage requirement for each driveway. So they are able, they're three hundred and thirty feet lot frontage, um, along two hundred and seventh. So they will be allowed to, um, each have a driveway. Um, Lackman is, is a higher, um, classification than, than that. So they, that street requires six hundred and sixty lot frontage per, um, driveway.
Well, this, this is Dennis Baldwin. I, I just, um, just curious because there, there are a creek crossing there and it looks like there might be a bridge or, or something that would put two driveways real close together.
Yeah, and the, the flood plain and the, the stream buffer zone are really at that corner, northwest corner. So there's, there's plenty of, of room to be able to, um, keep them separate enough. And just to, John, to add on to your, um, uh, questions about driveways, those permits are, are submitted and reviewed by Public Works. Um, as part of this process, uh, the applicant also provides a site distance analysis. So with that and the, and the permit, whoever comes in first will build that driveway. And then as part of the stipulations, we do require that, um, separate agreement for maintenance and such for that shared driveway.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions for Judd? All right, thanks, Judd.
Thank you.
All right, uh, public comments? Anybody in the, uh, hearing room wanna make any comments?
My name is, uh, Bill Duckworth. I'm one five five nine five, West two hundred and seven, so my property borders just to the west.
Okay.
And I understand with the development coming on, I'm actually somewhat excited about it because I'm hoping this may bring water. Because that's a lot of houses to have with no water. And having lived on this property, it's, Johnson County likes to, uh, compare me to lots that have pavement and water for my taxes, so I have no real comparables. And, uh, I just didn't know if that was in the development stage of having water one. Cause I've lived there for eleven years and I've got to stare at two water towers from my front porch for a while, quite a while. Just didn't know if that's in the plans or maybe pavement. And, um, that, that was really my, my biggest questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I can say that unofficially, well, first of all, nobody from the water district's recommended here. That's not part of the study. But everybody that lives out that way, uh, that's trying to build new houses now, I think is feeling your pain. So I, I appreciate your coming and taking the time to make the comments and ask the questions, so thank you. Any other people have, uh, questions or comments in the room, in the room?
Lori Nicolay, two zero six hundred, South Lackman Road. So I'm just to the north of this division. And it looks like you're just trying to get as many houses as you can in eighty acres, which I'm opposed to, opposed of because most of us have more than ten acres out there and it's a rural area. It's a busy road anyway to begin with, and I agree with them. We've looked at those towers longer than you have. And it's, you know, we've told there's no water to the north of us and we can't get water to the east of us. Um, and with this, it just looks like you're trying to put as many houses as you can in eighty acres and not keep the area the way it looks currently. Looks like you're trying to go more for a residential area, which I oppose because that's why most of us have moved out there to try to enjoy the area and not have as many houses as around us. And two hundred and seventh is a busy road and so is Lackman. They're both gravel. Um, and it's, I walk that and it's just a tight area to try to put all those houses in and then shared driveways. So I'm opposing it, one just for the way it looks, the aesthetics of it, and the way I feel it's gonna ruin the area that we live in.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions in the hearing room? Yes, sir.
My name is Bruce Devault. My family and myself own the half section catty corner to the northeast of this proposed development. Um, I, I would agree with my neighbors that, hey, there's no water down there. You, I don't know how many times you've drilled for water and there's nothing there. Yeah, I, I know, I know. Um, and, and breaking it into ten acre chunks is piano keys. Plain and simple, piano keys. And I'm just here to say that my family owns a half section. You approve this one, there may be a lot more piano keys in the, in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, nobody else in the room right now? Make anybody on Zoom?
No.
Okay, nobody on the Zoom? All right, uh, any other questions of the applicant, of the staff? Okay, we're gonna close the public comment period. Discussions amongst the board.
Kelly Rast, um, this is a hard one because there is not really areas out there that are divided up into the ten acre lots. So I do agree with that. I'm familiar with a lot of horse facilities out in that kind of area. Um, so with the water thing, so like when the- So with the water thing, so like when these people build the house, are they going to know that it's up to them to come up with their own water? Is that it?
It's pretty common.
This is Michelle Lanniger. It's, it's pretty typical that before they submit for billing permit, you have to do your testing for water, you have to do your perk testing for your sewers. It's all that prep stuff before you can go ahead and submit that permit because you have to submit the permits for the wells and the septic along with all of that. So they would, they would have all that information at the time of billing permits middle.
And is there a chance that they try and get these permits and they find out there isn't sufficient water or stuff or?
I guess there's a chance everywhere.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments?
I'm sorry?
Anybody else have any comments with that?
Well, I think that you don't have to go very far to the, at least to the east to find 10 acre lots. I think, you know, the water thing is unfortunate. I know several people have looked in that area that are faced with the same problem, but that's not our problem to solve. And, and you know, that's just part of the due diligence process of buying the lot. I, I don't, I mean, I, they aren't trying to change the zoning. They're operating within the rules. You know, I'm, I'm in support of the project.
Ken Klingensmith, yeah, that's what I was just thinking as well is when you look at the, the zoning, what's permitted within that zoning, lot sizes for something like this, this appears to fit within the guidelines. So while it might not be that ideal, you know, component with around, what's around it. When you look at just what's in front of us, there's not really something to turn it down.
Right.
We have a question for staff. Is this subject to the Parkland dedication fee?
Uh, no. There's a note on the plat that says it doesn't qualify.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments?
A comment is, yes, there's no water, but a lot of people, people's banks won't finance them if they don't have a water supply. So that's going to be up to their own financial situation, their bank financing. Uh, this, it's well within our guidelines that we can't turn it down as such.
Thanks, Dennis. Emily?
Emily Coleman, I agree with the comments already made. You know, there do seem to be other divisions in the area that have residential lots similar in, in size and character. And, you know, I think in all things it's by everywhere. So they own the property and do it.
Thanks, Emily. Dan, you wake out there? You have any comments?
I'm good.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Emily Coleman, I move to approve a preliminary plot, including a plot exception. Nope. Let me try that again. Emily Coleman, I move to approve a preliminary and final plot for residential subdivision with eight lots to be known as Wood Spring Estates for the reasons and subject to the stipulations recommended by staff and listed in the staff report. Am I forgetting anything?
There's.
Motion?
Kelly Russell.
Dan, for a second.
Motion in a second and a second and a half. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this will be approved. This is approved. It'll be recommended up to the zoning up to the Board of County Commissioners when?
Uh, this will go to the B O C C out there September 8th meeting, which is held at 9:30 a.m. here in the county administration building located at 111 South Cherry Street here in Olathe on the third floor board hearing.
Right. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, everybody. Okay. Going to move on to application or item C, application number S E two 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 three zero. C U P conditional use permit four six six five west 188 terrace. Hodges garages applicant and Jay Cook landowner. Do we have anybody from the applicant in attendance? Okay, what's your name? Laura Cook. Okay. All right. Staff report.
Diane Wicklin, Planning Department. I would like to enter in the staff report into the record dated July 27th, 2022. The landowners are Jay and Laura Cook. The address is four six six five west 188 terrace. The land use is residential and the property has R N one residential neighborhood one zoning district. There is a single family residence and a tool shed on site. And the site size is 6.2 acres. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a new detached accessory structure to be located in the front yard. The proposed 1,092 square foot accessory structure complies with the size restrictions of the detached accessory structures located on lots less than 10 acres in size. The proposed building will be 24 feet tall and it will be used for personal storage and garage space. And will also comply with the setback requirements. And will also match or be similar to the existing home in regard to the architectural style and exterior, exterior building materials and color of the, of the home. So however, the, the zoning regulations do state that regardless of the lot size in the R N one zoning district, accessory buildings are not allowed in the front yard unless first approved by a conditional use permit. So I'm just going to go through these graphics real quick. So again, this just kind of shows you the, where the subject property is located north of 191st Street. And then just west of Mission Road. Here's a close up aerial view of the property. And you can see the home and then the front yard area is everything from the main house kind of out to the street. And then the red square box is the location of the proposed garage in the front yard. This is picture, kind of an oblique view of the property. The red star indicates where the proposed garage would be going. This is a good aerial view to kind of look at the, this kind of smaller little subdivision here in the homes heavily tree, all of those lots, but in particular the subject property. And so it's pretty much 100% screened with all those trees from the other homes. This is a copy of the site plan. So the new building will be going in front of the house about 300 feet from the east property line and about 170 to the north property line. And then here's a few building elevations. Like I mentioned earlier, it'll be similar to the, to the home. And here's the side elevation drawings. And then here's the back elevation. So just to a, a quick review of the minimum infrastructure requirements. So water service may, may be extended to the proposed accessory structure and water one district serves the single family residence on site. A location check for the existing septic system has been conducted and the proposed location of the new accessory structure complies with the environmental department requirement. And that was confirmed by an email from the environmental department. The new detached accessory structure will be accessed, accessed via the existing driveway to the property and no new driveway entrances are being requested. Therefore, the existing infrastructure is adequate for the proposed accessory structure. In regard to kind of the review of the golden criteria. So the subject is located within the Mission Trail subdivision. And just, you know, again, accessory structures are a very typical and common residential accessory use. And so none of the lots in the vicinity of the subject property have accessory buildings located in the front yard. However, staff has reviewed it and has determined that the structure will be compatible. Even located in the front yard with the residential character of the neighborhood for the following reasons. One, the distance from existing homes, the location of the property at the end of the cul-de-sac lessens the visibility of the structure from the other homes. The structure will match and be similar in style and color as to the existing home. The topography and the steep slopes on the subject property and the location of the existing septic system does limit other possible locations for the garage. And the subject property is heavily treeed. And the proposed garage will not be visible from the street view or from the closest home, which is about 380 feet to the east. And as you saw on those aerial views, the five other lots along that cul-de-sac are also heavily treeed and have a very good buffer from those nearby homes. In terms of if, whether this use is in keeping with the comprehensive plan of the subject property and the existing residential subdivision here is compatible with the Blue Valley Plan area, which this site is, is part of. And also the proposed use is in keeping with the Stillwell Community Plan in regard to supporting residential development. And also just a quick note that one neighbor to the, to the north emailed, emailed me asking about the project. And after I emailed him the, the drawings and the site plan, he emailed back and stated that he had no objections or concerns to, to the project and, and was in support of it. So the building codes department, we received comments from them just stating, you know, that a building permit will be required for construction of the building. The Public Works Department submitted a memo. That's in the back of your packet. And with that, planning staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit to allow the construction of the detached garage to be located in the front yard subject to the stipulations shown on page nine of the staff report. And that does include a 20 year term. And then the, the reasons for approval are stated on page 10. And then also on page 10 is a proposed motion for the zoning board's reference. And I think with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Diane. Questions?
Yeah, Diane, this is Ken Klingensmith. Does the exist, does the R N, the R N one residential neighborhood one district uses for accessory buildings prohibit occupancy then for them? I just know with some applications like this, we've kind of had a stipulation that it wouldn't be occupied. There wouldn't be like, you know, it wouldn't turn into like a second residence or something like that.
Oh, Diane Wicklin, I do not have a stipulation like that. But it, you're correct, it cannot be, there cannot be a dwelling unit in, in this proposed building because only one house is allowed on the, on the property. There is not a stipulation right now to that effect. We could certainly add that in if the board, board wishes to do so. But yeah, right now it's just an accessory structure and there cannot be a dwelling unit inside it.
Further question on that. I was kind of thinking that that was captured under stipulation number two. Being that the, the structure will be used only for accessory uses permitted by the R N one. And I was just confirming that within that R N one accessory uses permitted exclude that type of activity.
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the end of that number two stipulation also says that it can be used for a business or a commercial activity. So yes, I believe that covers it.
Yeah, my only question on that was because I know we've had that in other applications. I have no other questions.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. An applicant like to come up and say anything, take any questions? Thanks, Diane. Name and address, please.
Laura Cook, four six six five west 188. Don't laugh at me, Ken. And I, I'm coming here for my husband. He had to be two places at one time. That's what happens when you have an eagle scout that waits till the last minute to get his eagle. So, and Mr. Hodges had a family emergency that he had to deal with. So I'm just here to answer any questions. This is for his car collection, which Ken kind of knows what it is. Kind of want to get the cars so we can actually have our garage for our vehicles instead of the classic cars that he has. So we're just wanting to move them into a space that he can have and work on them and stuff like that and have places for his parts.
Sure, perfect. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thanks, Laura. Public comments? Doesn't look like anybody's here for that. Anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? Okay, any more questions?
This is Ken. I've actually been to this property. I, I see by definition, the building is in the front of, front yard area. But when you're actually on the property, it's more, the proposed building is more next to the house and adjacent and I'm supportive of this application.
I kind of would say, I haven't been to the property, but kind of looking at the site plan, I'd kind of say the same thing. Friends kind of depends which way you're facing, right? Try that again, Dan.
It looks good to me.
Okay. If I got a motion?
Yeah, this is Ken Klingensmith. I move that the board approve application number S E two 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 thirty C U P A U for a conditional use permit to allow accessory structure to be located in the front yard for the reasons stipulations recommended by staff and set forth in the staff report.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's approved. It'll be recommended up to the Board of County Commissioners.
I'm over here. So this application will go to the Board of County Commissioners on September 8th, 9:30 a.m. 111 South, South Cherry here, here in this room.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item D. The applicant has requested a continuance so they can address some comments from the staff. Somebody would just like to make a motion to continue that?
This is Ken. I'll make a motion to continue that to the September 7th, 2022 meeting.
Kelly Russell, second.
Motion in a second to continue item D, which is application number S E two 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 three one P D P F D P preliminary and final plat and application number S E two 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 three two C P conditional use permit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Okay, so that'll be continued up to the 97th meeting. That is the end of business before the board and other business. Sean?
Thank you, Chairman. This is Sean, planning staff. I wanted to announce that the next meeting is scheduled for September 7th. We do have three applications that will be scheduled for a hearing at that meeting. But in addition, we wanted to mention, we'll be bringing forward draft bylaws for those. be bringing forward, uh, draft bylaws for the zoning board. These are similar to the bylaws that have been presented to the planning commission. Uh, we have not formally adopted bylaws for the zoning board. So that will be something to be brought forward for consideration and review. Uh, so that'll be included in the next package that goes out, um, next month in September. And it may be ready for a, a vote that evening or it could possibly be scheduled for the October meeting. But we wanted to give everybody a heads up about those bylaws being presented, uh, in addition to the other applications.
Is it possible if we have three other applications and that goes long? Is there like a halfway home thing? Could they get presented and then could the approval get tabled till the next meeting and people be free to study them? And then we could come back at the next meeting and discuss and vote?
Sure, Sean Penley. Yes, that's absolutely possible. It could be continued for formal action at the next meeting. That's absolutely fine.
Perfect. Any other business?
Um, I was just curious how the order of applicants is determined?
Sean Penley, Planning Staff. Uh, typically we have, we go in order on our, as far as our agendas, we'll go typically in order of, uh, timing of application or if there was old business, if there was an application that was previously scheduled to meet. I think that's the typical order. I don't know Diane, if you have, uh, other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's typically in, uh, in order that they're received and that's kind of a numerical order, you know, of like the application number.
Is there ever like any consideration for like people like that have a, an individual CUP or something that doesn't really affect a lot of people that maybe get in and out faster or?
Uh, Sean Penley.
No, it's probably not always.
We have, so we have made change, certainly suggested changes in order and especially if there's a, or if there's a really, um, a large item that actually we know is going to take a long time, that would almost always be put at the end of the agenda. But we typically just follow the agenda order as we receive the application. But if, and, and, and always too, of course, if the board sees something that may be a possible change, they could always make that suggestion at the beginning of the meeting. We can change the agenda if that makes sense. Certainly if you see, if any board member see something that makes sense, we could always make an adjustment.
I mean, at the, at the front of the meeting, like if, if anybody wants to bring that up, if we know that there's a case that particularly is going to have a lot of comments and you see something like this and want to bring that up, that's a great time to do it. And we can certainly vote on it. I mean, that's a good idea, good consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, business, motion to adjourn?
Emily Coleman, second.
Motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, adjourn till?